Okay. Good evening, Board President Cassin, Vice President Benke, and trustees and our school community here or watching at home. Tonight, we continue our conversation around the 2324 budget. I am joined this evening by Dr. Christopher Keough, Dr. Kay Sweeney, Dr. Bart Linehan, Mr. Andrew Colaswano, and Ms. Faith Sparks. This presentation shines a light on the budget items related to the Toccoh Middle School, Toccoh High School. We look at curriculum, programming, staffing, special education, extracurriculars, and athletics. We are proud of everything our middle school and high school has accomplished over the past year, and we look forward to building on that success in our next budget year. I will quickly review the budget process. Our board is driven by a very specific mission: to prepare every student for excellence. Our work advances the board goals that you see on this slide. As you know, the budget is based on the four pillars of our strategic plan: diverse needs of learners, professional learning, social and emotional learning, and contemporary teaching and learning. By focusing on these four areas helps us build our capacity in accomplishing these ambitious goals. Toccoh is a small district with a lot to celebrate. Included among these points of pride is our support of faculty and staff: outstanding fine arts programs, one-to-one devices, cutting-edge technology innovation lab and STEAM programs, On Strike instructional technology coaches, rich extracurriculars and community service projects, the full continuum of special education program, research-based writing and early literacy programs, our school resource officer, ACT/SAT prep courses, award-winning and accomplished athletic teams, after-school academic support programs, and our universal pre-K program. Our students achieve at high levels in many areas. We are Toccoh proud. These achievements drive our thinking about our strategic planning and process. In academics, our students celebrate acceptances to top colleges including Princeton, WashU, Cornell, Villanova, NYU, Tulane, Northeastern, University of Florida, all the SUNY schools, and so many more. In athletics, our students receive all legal, conference, and all section honorifics. In extracurriculars, students achieve at high levels, winning awards in clubs and teams like Science Olympiad and our debate team, and clubs that contribute to the community like Habitat for Humanity and arts clubs where students express themselves and hone their skills. With a sense of our priorities and driving goals, we turn to analysis of our enrollment in sections. As we said the last few times, college enrollment remains consistent, although we are increasing a kindergarten section, we are decreasing a second-grade section. This has no budget implications and keeps class sizes small, which is a board goal. In the middle school, our population also remains steady, in line with board priorities. Our average class size remain low. Lastly, we see some growth in our projected general education high school program, but it's still also within just about 12 students. We now move to budget additions and reductions. With our enrollment stable and our strategic plan in full swing, we are looking to build on the positive. Proposed changes in curriculum and materials at William E. Cottle includes resources that help to further align our early literacy program with scientific findings regarding reading instruction. Meanwhile, for our oldest students, we are looking at our novel studies and taking the opportunity to introduce some new texts that align with the more rigorous next-generation standards. Additionally, to increase rigor in our science instruction, we will invest in updated lab equipment for our next year's science investigations. In total, changes to the Cottle curriculum totals $19,300. Some of these purchases, such as the decodable texts, will also receive state aid. Meanwhile, at the middle school and high school, we will also invest in materials for rigorous science instruction while also procuring new materials for our growing engineering and STEM programs. We will also purchase subscriptions for writing support software, No Red Inc., vocabulary instruction, vocabulary.com, and set aside money for new novels in the middle school similar to the elementary school for the next-generation standards. Lastly, members of our science program have been looking at standard-based grading. The total cost of proposed curriculum changes is $12,600. More information about this year's progress and next year's proposal will be provided in the next section of our presentation. Our largest initiative in the Toccoh Middle School/Toccoh High School is our partnership with Innovative Designs for Education. This year, training will include, will continue to support our previous cohort of teachers while introducing the principles of our learner-active, technology-infused classroom to a new cohort of middle and high school teachers. Additionally, we are setting aside some money for developing teachers, working on developing curriculum over the summer for our new elective courses, which you'll hear about very soon. Total budgeted for these professional development initiatives is $23,050. More information again about this year's progress in professional development and next year's proposal will be provided in the next section of our presentation when we put the spotlight on the middle school and high school. In reviewing the changes in staffing, it is important to look at these changes as an entire district. Following the advancement of student sections, as I said before, there will be a reduction of a section in grade two and an addition of a section in grade K to accommodate smaller class sizes. Meanwhile, following a cohort of special education students in grade five, there will be a reduction of a 1.0 FTE of special education in the middle school, as we had two on the fifth-grade level this year. One will be added to the middle school and high school. So now we move on to the middle school and high school. In addition to the 1.0 FTE at the middle school, which is taken from the reduction of the elementary school, so that's really zero, we are adding an additional 1.0 FTE in special education for needs of the middle school and high school students. We also increased an additional .033 FTE to allow for special education earth-science lab. This will only meet once a cycle. We are adding additional electives in the high school. After reviewing our survey of parents who left the district, we learned that many identified a lack of electives as a driving reason. Also recently, I met with a representative group of students who suggested that we add some more electives. So next year, in addition to electives, we like the ones we recently added, statistics in math or science electives like forensics, we will offer high-quality, engaging electives in ELA, social studies, and math. Ultimately, this calls for a .4 FTE increase in ELA, a .2 FTE increase in math, and a .2 FTE increase in social studies. We are also adding a .1 FTE in ELA with a focus on writing. In terms of reductions at the middle school and high school, there will be a reduction of a .3 FTE due to the restructuring of our math symposium to target students interested in math acceleration and provide them with the necessary skills for success in algebra. That will be for interested seventh-grade students who want to get a head start on algebra if they want to take algebra in the eighth grade. We will also have a .1 reduction in the TIGA program as we have other supports in place for kids who are struggling with our tutoring program. Now turning to the district-wide impact, overall, we are proposing a modest .433 increase in staffing district-wide. This represents an FTE increase of 3.933 and a decrease of 3.5. Again, we are proposing an addition that totals less than a half-time employee. Meanwhile, in terms of extracurriculars, we are looking to expand our WEC art club as these are pop, this is a really popular club we saw this year with waitlists. Additionally, our STEM extracurriculars such as Science Olympiad have been so successful turning curious students into innovative thinkers, we want to put money aside for materials for the program. Additionally, the middle school debate team has taken off with leaps and bounds. Students are motivated to continue their journey with debate, and we want that offered in high school. The total budgeted change for extracurriculars is $4,739. In planning for changes in technology, we are entering a new installment purchase agreement with our local BOSIs to fund the replacement of Chromebooks in grades three, six, and nine. We are also replacing aging smartboards with new interactive flat-screen panels. At the conclusion of this year, we will have funded the replacement of all ARM-based projectors, saving us money on replacement bulbs. The total budgeted change for technology is $27,000. Now, we also have a reduction in one-time expenses. The 2022-23 budget includes amounts for one-time, non-recurring expenses. These are not included in the 2324 budget. These include, in 2022-23, we purchased furniture for the Cottle library, the middle school art room, and materials and resources for our latic learning spaces. The 2022-23 budget also included funding for the wireless upgrade project. Our wireless access points are at the end of their life and no longer supported. We purchased new ones, and they will be installed over the summer. The 2022-23 budget also included funding for the one-time purchase of curriculum materials that included multi-year subscriptions. Again, these were one-time costs and will be revisited at the end of their respective contracts. None of these are included in this budget. Total reduction of one-time expenses is $296,000. In total, with all the changes to support the advancement of our strategic plan, we are showing a net reduction of $152,391 to these areas that were discussed in the previous slides. And now, for the very exciting budget part, we shift to Ms. Sparks. Before we take a deep dive into the revenue and expenditures, please note the variables and drivers that impacted our decision-making. Our primary goal when building the budget is to allocate our resources in a way that meets the needs of all students in the district while also being fiscally responsible. Ms. Sparks will also discuss, as she did last week, the variables that, or last board meeting I should say, that financially affected the budget for next year, including inflation and the big increase in transportation costs. Since the last budget presentation, though, at the board's request to reduce the levy increases, Ms. Sparks and I have reviewed ways to accomplish this, and we thank the board for that request.
That's going to be hard to top. The 2023-24 budget has proven more difficult than the budgets of the past few years. Inflationary pressures are starting to catch up with us, and with the tax cap, we are limited with revenue increases. There are two growth factors in the New York State tax cap calculation that are set by the state and the district has no control over. The allowable levy growth factor, also known as CPI, which for the 2324 is kept, school year, is kept at 2% for the formula, even though CPI is at 8%. And the tax-based growth factor, which is 1.0065 for 2324, it's an increase over the current school year. That measures the brick-and-mortar growth in our district. Other factors that are part of the formula are pilot revenue, which are payments in lieu of taxes, and debt service for capital expenses net of building aid. Those are added back as an allowable expense in the cap. When we went through all the steps of this multi-step formula, the calculated maximum allowable tax levy for 2324, or the tax cap, is $31,737,172, or a percent increase of 4.38%, or $1,333,190. As was discussed in the past meeting, in an effort to be mindful of the impacts, inflation, the impacts of inflation on our taxpayers, and taking into consideration the support the residents have shown for our three recent capital bond referendums, we did a deep analysis to see if there was any way to not have the levy to the maximum amount of 4.38%. This leads us to our next slide where we looked at fund balance and year-end projections to see what we could do to bring this number down. The top of this slide shows our current reserves. You can see 72%, or 7.75 million of our reserves are set aside in special reserve funds. The remainder is split between assigned and unassigned. As we then look closely at our 2223 estimated revenues and expenses, we see that we are anticipating a surplus of approximately $670,000. This puts us in a favorable position for the year end. We also considered the 37% increase in foundation aid that I'll discuss later that we will be receiving for 2324 when reviewing the decision to use appropriative fund balance to balance the budget. Being that foundation aid is a recovering revenue, we feel even more confident in our ability to lower the levy under the cap. As a result of this deep analysis, we are proposing to allocate $500,000 of the anticipated year-end surplus to appropriate towards next year's levy to lower the percent increase from 4.38% down to 2.74%. Doing so will not increase appropriative fund balance used to balance the budget over the current year amount. While we understand that not levying to the maximum cap this year will impact future year levies, we feel confident in the level of contingency built into the budget along with the projected increases in recurring state aid revenues that this is the right thing to do for the taxpayers of our district. So going back to the calculation, although this multi-step formula puts us at 4.38%, we are proposing the 2324 levy to be $31,237,172, which is a 2.74% increase, or $833,190. This proposed tax levy is $500,000 below the maximum allowable under the tax cap, keeping $500,000 in the pockets of our taxpayers. This is an illustration of the multi-step formula. You will see we have rows T-U-M-V at the bottom, which shows that we are proposing to levy well below the maximum allowable amount. The tax cap law is implemented to ensure that property tax increases do not exceed certain limits each year. The limit is determined by a formula that takes into account inflation and other factors. Each year, we carefully review and work through the tax cap law and formula and have designed our budget in compliance with the law. We have ensured that the proposed tax levy increase is within the legal limit set by the law and designed to provide a balance between meeting the needs of our students and the financial burden of our taxpayers in this inflationary environment. We understand that any increase in taxes can be challenging for our taxpayers, and we have taken this into consideration in our budget planning process. We work to find ways to balance the needs of our students and the financial impact on our taxpayers and believe the proposed levy increase is a fair and balanced approach. And now we shift to foundation aid. We are projecting, the governor's budget has a foundation aid increase of $913,000, or 37.88%. When the 2122 budget was enacted, it included in the law that districts receiving more than 10% or $10 million increases in foundation aid seek public comment on the use of these funds. As we have done in the past two years, we will be sending out a survey to gain public comments, so keep an eye out for this in our happenings. Here you will see a summary of our proposed revenue budget, starting with real property taxes at an increase that is $500,000 below the legal tax cap limit. One other line is pilot and sales tax. While we are seeing that trends are starting to return to normal, we are projecting to increase sales tax revenue by 12.6%. Next, we have charges for services, which is primarily non-resident tuition, which includes students placed in our district through CSC with other districts paying this tuition. Our state rate, so the rate we charge other districts, is set by New York State, and we've also seen an increase in our state rate, so that is project, that is increasing our projected revenues. Other revenues I'd like to point out with big changes is, it's the other revenues line, which includes use of facilities and interest. As interest rates have been rising, so have our interest earnings. We were able to significantly increase the revenue budget for interest income from $15,000 to $100,000, or 567%. While the Fed continues to raise rates, this increase is still conservative compared to the year-end projections where we think we will be for interest earnings this year, as we know they will not continue to raise rates in perpetuity. We also increased revenue for real property taxes 400% from $5,000 to $25,000 as we are returning to normal from the pandemic and starting to see the use of our buildings pick up. For state aid, as I mentioned before, we are getting a 37% increase in foundation aid. This increase allows us to maintain current programming and small class sizes. As we anticipated, there is a decrease in building aid of about $300,000 due to aid for the 2006 capital project coming off of the books, but we are still working with SED on our building aid formula, and hopefully we'll have that adjusted soon. Overall, the state aid increase is at 19.5% at $825,730. The legislative budget is due on April 1st, 2023. Right now, we are working off the governor's proposal. There is also an increase in next year's BOSIs aid of about 18%. That's a one-time increase because we are paying for our wireless project this year, and we get the aid on that for next year. You will also see a decrease in inter-fund transfers. This has to do with our ban, our short-term financing sale in April of '22, where we had to pay, we used that revenue to pay the ban interest this year, so as of now, it's not going to happen next year. If we look at our revenues as pieces of a pie, you will see that real property taxes make up the biggest piece at 77.9% of that pie. Now, we pivot from revenues to expenditures. We will discuss some of the driving factors impacting the 2324 budget. With salaries and benefits making 71% of our budget, our three collective bargaining agreements have all settled through June 30th, 2025, which makes it easier to budget. Health insurance increases. We have two health insurance consortiums that we're part of. Our biggest one is increasing 8%, and NICE ship, which is the state's plan, is increasing 14.17%. For the state retirement system, these are the pensions. TRS is estimated to decrease to 10% of salaries. The current rate is 10.29%. And the employees' retirement system is for everyone that's not certified, not a teacher, is 13, is going to increase to 13.1%. The current rate is 11.6%. Now we turn to transportation. All of our two transportation contractors informed us that they will not renew for 2023-24 at CPI, so we had to go out and issue bids for our home-to-school in-district transportation and our out-of-district and special ed transportation. As of today, we received back our proposals for our home-to-school in-district transportation, which was a 37% increase over the current year. We are still waiting the results of the bid for our out-of-district and special ed transportation. We are also seeing big increases in facilities and utilities costs, with electricity increasing at 32%, natural gas increasing at 43%, and other utilities increasing at 29%, such as oil, sewer, and water. Facilities maintenance costs are increasing at about 37%. These are costs for maintenance, minor repairs, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, and painting and carpentry. While there are a number of budget drivers that are increasing significantly, there are also some budgetary reductions. These were one-time expenses included in the 2223 school year budget that will not recur, purchases of furniture and equipment, a decrease of $74,000, expenses for our wireless upgrade, a decrease of $108,000, one-time textbook and curriculum purchases, a decrease of $114,000. There is also a decrease of $200,000 in our transfer to capital. While this is not a one-time expenditure, as we've had it in our budget for a few years, given the approval of the 2023 bond, we propose reducing this by $200,000 down to $50,000, being mindful of all we've asked of our taxpayers. This budget line allows us to do other capital repairs outside of capital projects. This chart shows a breakdown of the 2324 proposed budget by function. The 2023-24 proposed budget is $40,113,060, a percentage increase of 4.9%, or $1,887,560. These numbers reflect the budget highlights that were discussed in previous slides. As you could see, the largest budget-to-budget percent increase is in our transportation costs. Inter-fund transfers has an overall decrease of $200,000. This line includes our transfer to special aid fund to cover our summer special ed program and that transfer to capital line. Here you will see the information we just presented in a pie chart, and not surprising for our school district, the largest piece of our pie is instruction. This chart shows the breakdown of the budget categories slightly different. It gets more specific, showing what portion of the budget is salaries, benefits, materials and supplies, contractual costs, and BOSIs services, and you can see more clearly the impacts of the reduction in one-time expenses reflected in this chart. When we put these into a pie chart, you will see that salaries and benefits make up the biggest part of our budget, the blue and red at 71%. So our budget summary, the 2023-24 proposed budget is $40,113,060, a 4.9% increase, a dollar increase of $1,887,559. The proposed tax levy is $31,237,172, or 2.74%, and in dollars, it's $833,190. This increase is below the legal tax cap limit, keeping money in our taxpayers' pockets. Where does this leave us? We are required to have a balanced budget. Looking at proposed revenue budget before appropriative fund balance and the proposed expenditure budget, we are left with a budget gap of $1,322,897. How do we close this gap? As a public school district, we are limited in the ways we can generate revenue. Our budget includes an appropriation of fund balance to balance our budget. The proposed 2324 appropriative fund balance is $1,322,897, which is still a reduction from the 2223 level of $37,631. As you can see, reflected in the next chart, it's not increasing, it's actually slightly decreasing.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks, and I forgot to thank Dr. Sweeney. I'll thank her again, and I thanked everybody for that great presentation. A budget is a reflection of a district's values, and we believe the proposed budget captures our innovation and commitment to our students. Our highlights permit staffing that supports favorable class size. We are also excited that the proposed budget allows for professional learning and new programs that promote innovation and critical thinking. You've seen some of those programs today because we have piloted them in the middle school and high school. This budget reflects a focus on early literacy, which you'll see next, at our next board meeting, and rigorous science standards. It also expands opportunities for advanced courses by introducing new electives in all content areas. Our proposals are linked directly to our strategic plan. We appreciate the support of the board and community as we enact a plan that prepares every student for excellence. Here you will see our budget calendar. We kicked off our series of conversations with a comprehensive overview of the financial landscape and an update on our priorities and commitments. Tonight, we focused on the middle school and high school. I again thank Dr. Linehan, Dr. Keough, and Dr. Sweeney, and Mr. Colaswano for their presentations and input, their continued focus on continuous learning and improvement at high levels for teachers, staff, and students. I thank our teacher leaders who contributed tonight's presentation: Ms. Melanie Buchanan, Ms. Suzanne Diorko, and Ms. Danielle Pravade, Dr. Gila Renza, and Ms. Kristin Vincenzi, and of course, Mr. Duchateau, who put together that video like right up to the last moment because we decided to put it because the show was so incredible this week. We really do have great teachers here. Tonight's spotlight on the middle school and high school provides the secondary students with an approach of education in which students actively engage in learning and challenges to gain knowledge and skills through inquiry and hands-on experiences. The 2324 budget for the middle school and high school focuses on courses and professional development to increase student engagement, motivation, and critical thinking skills, which lead to improved academic outcomes. On April 11th, please note, that's the new date of the next board meeting. We had one that was during our holiday recess, so we just changed that. On April 11th, we will return our attention to the elementary school. We will be joined by Mr. Marash, Mr. Kilgallen, Dr. Keough, and Dr. Sweeney, who will all talk about the work in which the building has engaged related to integrated co-teaching, literacy, and changes in rigorous standards for science. We will also make sure that there is no questions left unanswered at our meeting on Monday, April 18th, where the board will vote to adopt a budget. On Monday, May 8th, the administrative team will present the final budget to the community for a hearing before the annual vote and trustee election on Tuesday, May 16th. Looking ahead, there's so many people we thank. We appreciate the support of the Board of Education. They are a driving force in everything that we do, and I appreciate the administration, teachers, and staff in this multifaceted work. Last year, we were named one of the 100 Last year, we were named one of the 100 best high schools in New York, and this year, we saw our rankings climb and the local Westchester magazine publication go from, we were 35 four years ago, then we were 31, then we were 25, and this year, we are 20 in Westchester Magazine. This is a great time for Toccoe Tiger. Thank you, Dr. Linehan, Mr. DeBellas, and Mr. Colaswano, for your determination, care, and leadership of the students, teachers, and staff. A special thanks, first of all, to Dr. Linehan for his so many years of service in the high school, has supported so many teachers and staff, and now taking over for the middle school, too. We appreciate your dedication and support and the job that you have done here. And also, Mr. C. for taking on the new role, totally supporting students in student services and sports and extracurriculars. Special thanks to Dr. Keough for your stellar leadership in curriculum and instruction. So much of what we see here tonight is because of your incredible leadership. And Dr. Sweeney for your continuous focus on ensuring the best possibilities for our students with learning differences and always being so incredibly fiscally responsible as you do that. And thank you to Ms. Sparks, who always can make a budget sound exciting and understandable for your thoroughness, fiscal responsibility, and flexibility. Thank you to our teachers, who are really exceptional. As you can see tonight, our educators are focusing on rigorous and meaningful learning experiences for students. They are helping students develop important skills such as collaboration, communication, problem-solving, and creativity, which are essential for college and the workplace. When students are given the opportunity and support, they are more motivated and invested in their learning. This leads to increased academic achievement, as students are more likely to retain information and apply it to new situations. The budget supports students in developing important skills, as you saw today, related to research, analysis, and evaluation. Through their courses, they will conduct this type of research and this type of project-based learning. These skills are critical for sex, success in college and career, where individuals are often required to work independently, collaboratively, and think critically. Tonight, you saw how incredibly smart and talented our students are in academics, in sports, and the arts. Thank you to our community. Toccoe School District's community cares about all students and moving every student forward. This community comes out all the time and cheers for each and every student in all their endeavors. It is why people are moving to Toccoe, and people keep calling my office, and there are no houses for sale, but they do want to move here. The proposed budget for the secondary school includes programming, investments, and resources that will allow us to keep up the momentum as Toccoe leads the way.